I like to call this February work session the order. Not feeling that good, so if anybody's here to discuss the muzzle law, I had no time this month with the snow and I was out with the manager through the snowstorms. So I had no time to put a presentation together and it's not on the agenda. It's been taken off the agenda. If anybody still wants to talk about it, what we do have on the agenda is the leash law that we're hoping to pass. Again, I had no time to put a presentation together, so I called the manager on Friday and asked him to remove the muzzle law. And since then, I did have time to meet with a couple individuals from the borough and we're talking about some alternative, not that the muzzle is off, is out. I mean, it's something that I still think needs to be done. But we were talking about there's some obedience classes or some certificates that maybe a resident can produce that proves that their dog is friendly with the, in the general public and he's not a threat to be off of a muzzle, so. If anybody would like to discuss it, Chris seems like yes, son, you want to say something? Why don't you go up to the podium?
Is the borough going to provide the training for the dogs? Or is it going to be at the owner's expense?
Owner.
Okay, now, who's to say that?
I didn't even say we were going down that road.
I know, but I'm just, I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
I was open to suggestions. I met with two borough residents who have a pit bull and said that they feel that they take their dog to obedience school and they said, would you consider if there was a certificate passed that showed that our dog could be socialized with other animals and things like that? I said, I'm open to any suggestion. I'm not saying, and I said this to you last, I'm not saying that muzzling is the only way to go, but we need to do something.
But it all goes back to why pit bulls? Why all have to be, have proof that it can be socialized when a cocker spaniel doesn't need proof that it's socialized or a Doberman?
Well, I think there's enough documentation on pit bulls that I'll present that'll prove to you they're the most vicious dog in the United States.
But they're not.
Well, you're saying that.
You're saying it's a pit bull, it's been shown.
Well, I had documentation that proves that.
And I will get the documentation that it is not the pit bull.
Pardon me?
And I've seen, on the news, they had a report that beagles were considered vicious, and I had a beagle, you know that, that beagles were considered more vicious than the pit bull in the ranking. So why not beagles?
If I was being attacked, I would rather be attacked by a beagle than a pit bull.
I'd rather not be attacked at all, and I know.
Me either, but if I had to, I think I'd rather fight off the beagle.
Okay, so as residents and owners of pit bulls or mixes, what will, if, it's a certificate program, first of all, where do we get the certificate?
Like I said, I didn't go down that road yet, but what I want to do is be able to give borough residents an option to say, here's it, here's two or three options we have, and if you don't want to do any of the two or three options, then you need to muzzle your dog.
But it all goes back to the breed specific. That's, that's my point.
That's my point, too.
Cocker spaniels, Dobermans, rottweilers.
I have a list of every dog breed and I will put that up on the screen.
Can we, not necessarily rebuttal, could we also do a PowerPoint showing why not? Would that be acceptable at the next meeting?
If you would like to meet with me during the week, like I did with the other couple, I'm here, I'll meet you any day you want and you could wish your opinion. What do you mean, you get it?
She said, "Thank you."
Okay. Does anybody else want to talk on this right now?
Just telling you things real quick, Catherine, about 351 Washington Street, I feel like I live here. There's something called, I've been doing research because you said you want alternatives, okay? There's something called Good Canine Citizen. I believe the American Kennel Club does the program. And you take your dog through the program and you get a certificate from them that says your dog is a good canine citizen. Okay, that's an option for people. I've also been doing research on safety for children. There's a program, it's called, I believe it's called www.dogonsafe.com, where they teach children what's called to be a trick. When a strange dog approaches them, the child stops, they put their head down, they fold their hands, they ignore the dog. There's people in Bucks County that can come to the school and give children course. They've actually proven one hour of safety training with dogs in like grades, maybe six or, no, I'm sorry, second, third grade, can lower the risk of getting bit by a dog by eighty percent. So those are just some suggestions I'm throwing out. I'd be willing to meet with you and bring my own, you know, information during the week if you like.
Well, the reason I, I offered to meet during the day was because I don't think we need to take up two or three hours of everybody's time to do.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
This PowerPoint presentation. I don't, the only reason I wanted to do one, because I said, I did some research and I'd been following this one study on pit bulls, but I don't think council wants to sit here for hours, I don't think the people in the audience want to sit here for hours. If you want to come in during the day, I will make myself available to whoever and whoever, whatever council member wants to be there. You don't have to meet with me, you can meet with whoever you want. I'm just offering to be nice about, if you want to meet during the day, I'll give you as much time as you want so we're not tying up a council meeting.
Oh, no, I wasn't offering another presentation, I was just.
Well, I'm referring also to Chris, but something has to be done. The other day, I got a phone call from a girl who's pregnant and she was in her car crying that she couldn't get out of her car because the neighbor's dog got loose and was a vicious dog and she, she was worried about being attacked. So I showed up, the animal control officer showed up, and the police showed up. The girl said, oh, he got out again, again, and the dog's vicious, so please don't get near him because he probably will bite. That's the word we got. So when everybody says, well, they're good dogs, and you may have a good one, I'm not saying your dog's bad, but I could tell you more than, where there's more bad dogs in pit bulls than there are good. And I could prove that to you, so.
Well, great.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Best thing for every pit bull that bites somebody, there's ten point five million who don't.
You're right. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to talk on this pit bull issue?
Are you voting, is it going to be next week or next month?
No, right now, we're voting on the leash law. It's not tonight, it's on the agenda to be voted on Monday night. Leash law only. And our solicitor will explain to you what that confinement means. As far as the muzzle law, I'll do a presentation hopefully next month.
Next month.
Yeah, in March, the first Monday in March. And we'll either vote on it in March or we'll vote on it in April, all depends what goes on during the course of the month.
Okay. Thanks, Karen. I'm sorry, I just forgot something. In the weeks since the last council session, a shih-tzu came after my dog. So, and he didn't start, the shih-tzu came after him.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not just pit bulls.
Mr. Salar, you want to do that while we're on this subject? Explain about the leash law now or you want to wait till later? Get it over with.
Right, based upon council's, I guess, though, last month, they voted to advertise the change of the confinement law section of our ordinance to include a leash requirement. That was advertised last week. Each, each council member has a copy of the proposed ordinance. There's really two things in there, and we had discussed also, we needed to improve, I'll use the word improve, we needed to increase our fine because it was fifteen dollars before. So obviously, that was kind of out of, outdated. But let me tell you what we did. We had an ordinance that at one point was exactly the same as the state confinement law, which we've explained before, is separate from the dangerous dog section. What this council did, was it last year, is we beefed up the definition of confinement to say that it wasn't enough to keep your dog on a tether or a chain in the yard, but we wanted there to be a fence. And the fence had to be of sufficient height and strength to, to retain that particular dog. Okay, we did that and there was no opposition to that, and we're very comfortable that we're permitted to do that under the confinement section of the state law. That's the, that was the trip we made to Harrisburg where we discussed that with the Department of Agriculture and the Chairman of the Agricultural Committee, and they felt comfortable we can do that. Okay, what this amendment says, currently under the law, our current ordinance, it basically says that it should be unlawful for the owner or keeper or any dog to fail to keep at all times such a dog, either A, confined within the premises of the owner, okay, and that's where we further can define confinement as including a fence, B, securely secured by the means of a collar and chain or otherwise, other device so that the dog cannot stray from the premises, or under reasonable control. And this is where we've had problems, we've had cases turned over on citation because some people have interpreted under control to mean voice control, that if you were walking your dog, it doesn't have to be on a leash. And I think this council now feels that we need to define that under control to include a leash. It's not enough for you just to walk your dog and have it under voice control. So we are now defining under reasonable control to mean when not on the premises of the owner, the owner shall have the dog secured by means of a leash, not to exceed the length of six feet, and of the type sufficient to secure that dog, and shall otherwise keep the dog under reasonable control. Okay, that's important. It's not enough just to keep your dog on a leash. Okay, the dog has to be in the hands of somebody that can control that dog. If the owner hands the dog, an eighty pound dog to an eleven year old child, and that dog breaks free of the leash, then that dog's not under reasonable control. Okay, so it means both things. It means secure the dog when you're walking it so it doesn't get away. And also, so you know, it does say owner, but owner is defined as being the person who has custody of the dog. So somebody can't say, I'm not the owner of the dog, I'm only the babysitter. Well, you're responsible, too. If you're going to take a dog out, you got to be responsible. The other thing that we're proposing to do is, under the current ordinance, basically the first two times you're cited, you would be given a fine of fifteen dollars, which obviously is out of date. And I believe the third time, it was a hundred dollars, which is out of date. So we're bringing this up to more current standards, and what we're proposing is the first time you're cited under this section, either, not just if you don't have a leash, if you don't have the dog under control, if you don't have the dog fenced in, the dog gets away from your house. First time, it's a hundred dollars, second time, it's three hundred dollars, the third time, it's six hundred dollars. So there are the changes to the confinement law of our ordinance.
So council, I think, has to make a decision, and we'll get into that discussion later. Does that define stipulate a one, three?
One, three, six. The sixes, the, if you look at other courts of our ordinances, for this type of violation, six is about the highest. That's up to six. A judge under the circumstance may say, I'll do three. He can go up to six hundred.
So does everybody in council understand, Dylan, we're working on the leash law, not the muzzle law? Is everybody in favor of putting this on the agenda? Jimmy?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with them. I think leash law, I think we need it. Question I have is, who enforces the ordinance?
Police, the animal control officer.
Who else?
I don't think.
I don't think code enforcement.
So police, is that correct, Chief?
Code enforcement can also enforce the ordinances also, are you correct?
They can, but why would they be out there?
Code enforcement officer.
They can, if you're saying they, if they're out there and there's a dog loose, I'm sure they can have the same jurisdiction as everybody else, they could write a citation under.
Correct. They're authorized by the courts, but generally, we will or will notify the animal control officer.
So you're okay with, Jimmy, the?
No, I'm in favor of leash law.
One, three, six. Lorraine? Anthony? Betty?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
All right, so we'll make that an agenda item for Monday night. That'll be the only thing on the agenda at this time for the leash law. Chief? Herbie?
Which one?
No Indians.
We received the final report from SEPTA on the training exercise that we held in November and came back very positive that the excellent response from the first responders and that the exercise actually exceeded SEPTA's expectations in our participation in conducting that drill. Second thing is, in the past ten days, we had a carbon monoxide incident in a two hundred block of Cedar Street. Fire department responded, they, when they got there, they used their meters, they found ninety parts per million in some of the rooms, two hundred and eighty parts per million in the basement. Your CO detector will activate at thirty-five parts per million, so it was almost ten times higher. Fire department procedures, when you get to a hundred parts per million, the residency has to be vacated. And so we contacted the code enforcement, they came out, the person had to leave their house until the heater was repaired, they got it repaired, and then they were back in. But it just goes to show you the importance of the carbon monoxide detector. Had that occurred during the night, overnight, it's a possibility that we could have had a fatality, so they remain very important. And along with that, the fire administration, fire prevention grants application period ended on February the fourth, and once again, we submitted an application for carbon monoxide detectors, we changed some of the language to better explain what we plan to do. We asked for thirteen hundred carbon monoxide detectors, and the borough share of that, the total cost of the project would be twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to do that, and the borough, we'd have to come up with five percent. So that comes out to about a dollar a detector if we're successful.
Well worth it.
Yes, absolutely. That's it.
That's great. And again, for everybody at home that's watching, the fire company comes out, they install the carbon monoxide or the smoke detector in your home.
Right now, we don't have carbon monoxide detectors, but if, as part of this grant, if we're successful, we will install the carbon monoxide detector also.
But we do install the, right now, the fire.
Smoke detectors, yes.
So there's no reason why a borough resident should be in their home without one when you're having him installed for nothing at no cost.
Yes.
To, you know. Okay. Chief?
We stepped up our enforcement of truck ordinances along Green Lane, and a number of citations were issued to trucks recently, and we're going to continue efforts in that area along with other areas throughout town. And our aggressive driving details are going to continue into two thousand and eleven with additional funding coming from the state. We're just about ready to wrap up the recertification of all of our officers in use of a taser, and that should happen very shortly. There's just a few more officers left. DARE began in the schools last week, at St. Mark's School, Officer Rivera started the program, he'll stay there until he completes the course, and then he'll move over to Snyder-Girardi School after the PSSA tests are completed. As, as everyone knows, right by now, an arrest was made Friday night regarding the arson that had occurred back in October on two, three oh zero one Ractford Street. Arson cases are very difficult to investigate. They are very time consuming, and usually they involve collaboration with other agencies. And a number of our officers worked on that case. The two officers really stood out during the entire investigation, that was Officer Bill Davis and Sergeant Randy Morris. During the four months since the arson, there have been interviews, re-interviews, more interviews, and other gathering of evidence to make this case good enough to present to the DA's office and get approved by the DA's office. We worked with the DA's, the county detectives, Bucks County Fire Marshal's office, and the guys did a tremendous job, and they will be commended for their efforts. But I also want to thank all the victims in this case, all the ones who were patient and understanding while our officers tirelessly worked on this case. It took a lot of time and they stood it, they stood their ground and they continued to investigate and follow up leads, and they stayed on it and resulted in the arrest Friday night, and I'm really proud of them. So I want to thank the victims for what they, what they were through.
We got a great police force downstairs, all right. Any questions for either chief?
Chief Slack, how did you know about the carbon monoxide?
The, there was, there was an alarm was dispatched. The fire department was this, the carbon monoxide detector in the residence went off, they called nine one one, they dispatched the fire department, when they got there, they went in, they had, we had meters, the meters take digital readings from zero on up to like three hundred parts per million, and so we get an actual reading. A lot of the, the carbon monoxide detectors you're having in your home, you can buy them with digital readouts, but you can also buy them where all they do is they go off when you get to a certain level.
Okay.
Okay. I got a couple of things, I'm going to run by them as quick as possible. One, we've been having several meetings with, if everybody remembers when Congressman Murphy got that nine hundred thousand dollar grant for Bristol, where we found out that a lot of it is just for infrastructure, meaning Stormwater Management, things like that, and we wanted to put a lot of this towards the marine and docks, and so what we're trying to do is transfer some of that money over from that grant to the borough yard improvements. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that it may be something that, if we can get that nine hundred thousand dollars transferred, or a portion of it transferred over, it would mean, you know, great savings to the borough if that's possible. But it's one thing just to bring council up that we've been meeting with. The other thing is the, the old tea company that Fred Baumgardin owns, if you notice, on Jefferson Avenue and on Canal Street, there was a lot of graffiti done on that building. And I think Sergeant Moores and whoever was on that night made an arrest, they responded immediately, and there was, a phone call came in, I think Merle was involved in helping to pursue to catch them. And Merle, would we just catch him going through the train station tunnel or something?
Yeah, we were spraying in the tunnel, and the police were already looking for him, and I just happened to see him, one of my wife and I were driving by, and I called Sergeant Moores, and they had three, four cars over there in St. James', and they picked them up.
So he sent a borough letter thanking the borough for the fast response and for catching them, and it was copied to Sergeant Moores, myself, the borough manager, and Merle. So again, if you come in town and we catch you, we're going to do everything we can to prosecute you. Our basketball program will be starting, there's registration, it's being announced, it'll be on our TV channel for kids that, from K to eighth grade, it'll be a small, I think K to third is at Warren Snyder, and fourth to eight is probably at Bristol High School. It's under the direction of Cindy Wade, and again, look for details, I know they're sending flyers home with their kids about it. These are the two flyers that your children will be coming home with. This one is girls and boys, third through eighth, and this is girls and boys, K, K to second. So if you want your children to play, it's a program that Borough Council sponsors, it's only ten dollars per child, it just covers their uniform and the trophy, the ten dollars, the borough picks up all the other costs. Let's talk about snow. And so far, just so everybody knows, that from January, from December twenty-sixth to now, we got fifty-one inches of snow so far in town. And mostly, all the snowstorms that we had were very easy to handle, they were powdered snow, we pushed it aside, we blew it away, and moved on. The last snowstorm, when we got that snow, it came in the morning, first of all, that every weather channel blew the storm. They were calling for three to six inches, six to twelve inches. Well, we have, you know, Merle stays on top of this with our Public Works Department, our Emergency Management Coordinator, so it isn't like we all went to bed and forgot about it. During the day, our guys did an excellent job plowing, they got the streets down to blacktop, they salted everything, they went home, and they were scheduled to come in again at midnight because they had to go home and rest at least for five or six hours. Well, the snow start, it started to hail and rain, which caused about a three inch of ice to form that stuck to the blacktop, and it wasn't only here, it was throughout Philadelphia and all over Bucks County. So when they got out at midnight, it was snowing three to four inches an hour, we couldn't keep up. There was no way for our trucks, and we usually put a truck in each section, we had to put two or three trucks in each section because our trucks were getting stuck and they were helping each other, pushing each other out. But it wasn't for lack of effort that these guys got behind the storm. They worked, I think, seventeen straight hours, they went home and slept, came back in the next morning, plowed again all day, went home and slept, came in, we rented two backhoes, and we had a backhoe and a bobcat, thank God we bought, and we went and tried to scrape the ice off of every street with the backhoe bucket. And as they were scraping them, our trucks were plowing the ice because if you went down the street, it was pushing you side to side and you were going over ruts, and when nobody understands, when you're plowing the streets in Bristol, you only have about eight to ten inches on each side of that plow, and when there's a rut in the street, it pushes the truck one way or the other, or your car one way or the other. So by throwing snow in the street and all, it just makes their job so much harder to do. But they got a handle on it, by the end of the day Saturday, I think everybody in town was happy. The problem we're having now, and I spoke about this two years ago and last year, are the chairs, the tables, the gas grills, whatever you put out in the street, you have to remove, Mr. Dillon put our inspectors in the truck, we had other people trying to get out of the truck, move the chair, move whatever's out there so we could plow. I think a neighbor, when we first get the storm and everybody digs out, I understand you want to put a chair there to save your spot, but your neighbor also should have enough respect for you that you dug out the spot, and it should be your spot. It shouldn't be, you know, whoever pulls in just backs into that spot. But anyway, it's now, five, six days went by, and there's, some streets are just blacktop and there's still chairs out. And it's making us, it makes it hard for us to come down the street because a lot of these snow piles that are there, we could push them, and we can get rid of the snow to open up from the curb line all the way down. So I'm asking residents, before this borough needs to take action and pass an ordinance to force you to remove these chairs, please remove your chairs and tables and grills and whatever you have out there so our guys can do their job and come in and plow the street the way it's supposed to be plowed. And again, I mean, it was a tough storm, it was a wet storm, it was heavy, but I think they did a great job and for, you know, we only have eight employees and George, so I mean, you know, to put the hours in that they put in and exhausted as they were, you know, there was no quit in them, they just, you know, kept coming back in and doing what they had to do to get this town the way it should be, and a lot of people compliment it. There's a lot of emails were sent in. I got a phone call from a lady. I got a phone call from a lady on Jefferson Avenue who said, I don't know who the two guys were on Jefferson Avenue, but there was a lady that was on crutches, and she had to get into her car, and she was trying to get in with her crutches through the snow. And they got out of their truck, helped her in her car, cleaned some of the snow away so she could pull out. So it shows you what kind of guys we have on the street. We got, I think, a first-class street department, and they have the equipment to do their job. That's what makes it easier for them. All right, I got one more thing, and then I'm sure everybody's tired of hearing me. I don't know if everybody remembers, Donnie Crowe used to sit here every meeting, used to come to every meeting, and a great supporter of this council and this town. Well, as I'm speaking, there's going to be a slide being shown at home for everybody to view. And I'm going to read this letter. It says, "Dear Friends of Don Crowe. Don Crowe has been a volunteer with the Bucks County Rescue Squad and American Hose, Hook &amp; Ladder Fire Company, Number Twos, for the past 46 years. In those 46 years, Don has helped hundreds of families in Bucks County, Bucks County area throughout his career. Don was recently paralyzed from the waist down from a medical condition and will never walk again. He is in need of a special motorized wheelchair that is very expensive and is not covered by any medical coverage that he has. When the residents of Bucks County needed Don's help, he was there. Now I'm asking you to be there for him. I have started a fund drive to get the much-needed wheelchair for him. I am asking you to consider an affordable contribution of your choice to make this successful. Checks can be made payable to Friends of Don Crowe and mailed to my office at 964 Woodburn Road, Levittown, Pennsylvania, 19057. On behalf of Don Crowe and his family, I thank you in advance for your support." And it says, "Sincerely, Nick Marino." I don't know if anybody knows, I say Nicky. Nicky started this fund drive to help Donnie out, and, again, I mean, here's a guy that devoted his life to Bristol Borough, and it's, if there's some way that anybody could send a contribution in for this wheelchair. I spoke to him the other day, and, you know, he's down in the dumps, he misses the town, he just, you know, he won the Come and See the Christmas tree, which meant a lot to him. Every year on Mill Street, he was always out there giving pretzels out, or soda, or water. And he wants to come down to see the Borough Yard, and now it's been ripped down, and things that are happening in Bristol. These are the things that he cares about. He cares about the town and what it looks like and what's going on, and he's a great guy, and, you know, again, I mean, all these firemen, they put their life on the line every day, and that you pull together as a town when one of your own needs something. I personally have made a donation to this cause, and I understand maybe in March, there may also be a beef and beer, and I'm hoping that everybody in council, everybody at home that's watching, there's, again, we have this while I'm talking, there's an address and all up on the screen to mail something to Nicky, and I'm sure, whatever he's sure, I know Nicky a long time, he'll make sure that he gets the difference to get Donnie a chair, to get him back into Bristol to see this town again. So, thank you. Mr. Lutz.
I have a few questions, I guess, on the treasurer's report. I'll just text Angie. She did that last month. I got my answers. In fact, one of the things I requested last month was the list of all the Borough employees' salaries for the year 2010. Everybody get that? Okay. So I have a few questions there. I'd like to take care of them.
Let me give mine now.
Mr. Dillon is for December. Does this consider the end-of-year report? Or do we get a separate?
That's the December checks and the end-of-year report.
The year-to-date?
Yeah.
So there is no other end-of-year report to this? Okay. I got...
It's all subject to audit. The auditor's now in.
No, I... The only other thing I have, Ralph, and it's truly not anything that's Borough business, but it's a kind of a human interest story. And I'm kind of proud of it because, I know the young man, but we had a Borough resident who was recognized in a national magazine, him and his family. And I thought it was really a very humanistic kind of a feature story. It was also covered, not only covered in Red Book Magazine, but also shown on television. A lot of you people know Joey Kamnick. His mother and father live on Wilson Avenue, Joe Senior and Lucy Kamnick. And he's also the nephew of one of our employees downstairs. So, Pat Kamnick. So, I have a copy of the article that was in Red Book Magazine. I just thought maybe we could send him a letter of congratulations. Are you familiar with the story? You know, real brief. Joey Kamnick and his wife, Joey graduated with honors from Bristol High School. We went on to Susquehanna University of Penn, became a lawyer. Went down to Washington DC, got a job down there, and hooked his wife, and I guess they tried to have children for quite a while, couldn't have any, so they adopted. They adopted a child. A few months later, I guess they went out and hired a surrogate. They wanted a second child. And the next thing that happened, she got pregnant. They had three infants within a year. So, it made Red Book Magazine, it was on TV. It's quite a story. So I just thought maybe we could send him a letter congratulating him and his family, wishing him success. Maybe the mayor could just send a little resolution. Just, listen, the guy, the guy, he's from Bristol, and it makes me feel good and proud that I know him, I know his family, and he made a national publication, and he was on TV. So, I'm going to give a copy. The manager bring him his copies.
What we'll do is draft up a letter, and if you're happy with it, we'll also sign it and send it home.
Should be on behalf of the whole Borough.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I just thought it was an interesting story. That's all I have.
You said, "I still have this report for the salaries."
Say it again?
I thought you were talking about, you asked if I had to report for the salaries.
Yeah, I asked you to get a copy. I want to make sure everybody got one.
Oh, I didn't, I'm trying to figure out.
I want, no. No, I want everybody to get a copy of it, and if you got a copy, that's fine. That's all I have.
All right. Last Saturday, January 29th, 2011, the Italian Mutual Aid Club honored three young men with close ties to Bristol Borough for their service to our country. They are Marine Lance Corporal Kevin McCarthy Jr. Kevin served seven months in Afghanistan. Kevin McCarthy Sr. is Kevin's proud father, and his extremely proud grandmother is Joanne McCarthy. They are both from Bristol Borough. Kevin would like to thank the Italian Mutual Aid for their warm welcome, and he would also like to thank Bristol Borough Council for attending the party. Kevin asks that we all keep him in our prayers. The second young man, Private Stephen Cagnetti, 19 years old, he's from Platoon Number 1004, Paris Island, North Carolina, is an aviation mechanic engineer. He will be going to Florida next to lead for orders. Stephen's proud mother, Karen Cagnetti, has always been the strongest influence in his life. His grandmother is also extremely proud. Her name is Carol Cagnetti, and her and her late husband, Junior Cagnetti, owned and operated the Cadillac Bar formerly on Lafayette Street in Bristol. The third young man that was honored, Private First Class Jeremiah Jones, who is a 2005 Bristol High graduate, he's 24 years old. He's from Platoon 1001, Paris Island, North Carolina as well. And Jeremiah Jones was not able to attend the function because he had a previous family engagement. His proud parents are Barbara and Bob Miller of Linden Street in Bristol. An interesting note about these three young men, Kevin, Stephen, and Jeremiah, that they all came home on the same day, Saturday, January 22nd, 2011. It's a testament to these young men and their families, in this time of unrest all over the world, that they would choose to protect our interests abroad as well as here at home. It is the bravery and unselfishness of these families and others like them that keep all of us safe and give us our freedom. We want to thank you and pray that our Lord protect and keep you close always. Now, this past Saturday, we were invited to the Number Three Fire Hall for a banquet, and Mayor Lebo, Jim Dillon, Maria Field, Councilwoman Mucie, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and I all had the pleasure of attending, and we had a really nice time. I was at the Regency Room, and thank you for inviting us. We had a really nice time. And lastly, I would like to speak about the snowstorm. A lot of people don't realize that the streets have to be plowed first, and then they get to the alleyways. And a lot of people park in the alleyways, my mother being one of them, and I advised her, next time that there's a bad storm, please try to park on the street if you have to get out early in the morning. Because we got some calls that people needed to get out to go to work, that were in alleyways. And if at all possible, I think it would be easier for people like her to park on the street, you know, in that case, if they hear that it snows, you know, coming. So, and I want to thank the guys for their hard work. And I have one more thing, and the chief and the mayor know about this. There were some students from Bristol High that, when they were walking home from school, were throwing snowballs at a mailman. And so we have a patrol that's going to go around and watch out for this. There was also some, it was really bad. On Wilson Avenue, a woman was talked to using racial slurs by some students. So, the police were called, and, you know, they're checking into it, but, you know, we really have to teach our kids to be nice to people. It really made me upset. This mailman, Jim Gleason, has been with us in our area for so long. When he told me that he had been hit by snowballs, I just couldn't believe that kids would do something like that to the mailman, you know? He's having a hard enough time getting around, you know, let alone being hit by snowballs. But, you know, the policemen are going to patrol the area, keep an eye out, and please talk to your kids, tell them not to do mean things to people. Thank you, that's it.
I have a couple of things. First of all, the three young men who are serving our country, I'd like to thank, and that's more important than anything I have to say. So there's three young men. I have a question for, a couple of questions for Mr. Dillon. I'd like to get a date for the installation of the playground at Jefferson Avenue. Second of all, this summer, we had a open space meeting, an open state space plan that was chaired by Councilwoman Rodriguez, and it was adopted on July of 2010. In the report, there's a paragraph I'd like to read, and I am going somewhere with this, so please bear with me. "The various areas adjacent to Route 13 highway corridor within and adjacent to the Borough boundaries are designated for preservation purposes. The preservation of the existing open space area and the acquisition of small parcels will add to the Borough's open space area, improve flood protection at Silver Lake, and vigilantly enhance the highway corridor. The Borough currently maintains a parcel owned by Bucks County along Route 13. The Borough should initiate negotiations with the county officials for the transfer of this property to the Borough." That little bit of land, when I was younger, and we played baseball, and Mr. Toasty coached us, it was called the Hub. They had a little backstop there, it was a little field, right by the diner. Well, for years, the Borough has been cutting the grass there and taking care of it. And I would like the manager to set up a meeting with Bill Mitchell of the County Parks to discuss acquiring that piece of land. With all the ball being played now, when I was a kid, it was only guys playing. Now, the guys are playing, the girls are playing, and we're running out of space for kids to practice and kids to play, and an open space for anything. But if we owned that land, I'd feel a lot better about it, that the county wouldn't take it, do anything they wanted with it. And last, two weeks ago, was a meeting set up for Route 13, and I was off, and Mr. Dillon, he planned the meeting, and then it snowed, and the PennDOT officials couldn't come. And at that meeting, they talked about a traffic light and a safety improvement. Can you bring council up to date on the project, Mr. Dillon?
Last week, we did have a meeting with PennDOT officials. We met with one of the property owners over on Route 13 that had concerns about the project, and I think the PennDOT officials tried to address his concerns, and I think he is satisfied with what PennDOT's going to try and do, give him easier access to his property. Also, PennDOT officials handed us a study. The Borough, ever since this project started a number of years ago, has requested a traffic signal be installed on Route 13 at Second Avenue. Their report states that a signal is not warranted, it doesn't meet the state requirements nor the federal requirements, and since there's significant federal funds involved in this almost $30 million project, they will not pay for a traffic signal. However, they did say that if council wanted, they would go with a pedestrian activated crosswalk signal. So they'd like to know if that is satisfactory to the Borough, and here's an example of, you know, what that would look like. So, I'd like to review it quickly with our engineer, and I'll work back to council. It was activated by the pedestrian who's trying to cross 13 at Second Avenue.
One more thing, and I'm sure this happened in other streets of the Borough during the snowstorm, and I'd like to commend the people of the 600 block of Beaver Street. They did something during the storm that really helped our street. No one threw snow into the street. We had piles on the sidewalk that were seven feet tall, and they dug out, but they didn't throw another three feet of snow into the street to make it next to impossible for our guys to plow. The street was pretty good to go, and I'm maybe the worst driver in the world. And when I got up at 5:30 to go to work, about four o'clock, I heard the plow come down, and I went, "Oh, I'll never get out. I'll never get out." Well, because they didn't throw snow into the street, there was a ridge maybe that high. My car went right over it, and I went to work. So thank everybody on the 600 block of Beaver Street and every other street in Bristol that didn't throw snow back into the street.
Yeah, I had a phone call on my way in here tonight. I wanted to see if, I don't want to send Rory. I don't know, he's been there a couple of times. Maybe if John can go out. I mean, I know Rory's just as capable, and maybe, I don't know, maybe John will see it differently, and maybe they both can get together on this issue. I have a tenant on 512 Bass Street who's on the first floor, who is in... I have a tenant on 512 Bass Street, who's on the first floor, who was in a wheelchair, who is not living there right now because she claims there's no heat or hot water. I know I've, me and Rory have gone back and forth with this before and I don't know what else to do for her. She's definitely not living in there. She goes home during the day and she's kind of being harassed by the landlord. And there's not much we can do, I'm sure. I mean, she should really take it to civil court, but I just would like.
I am rent.
She's, she's, right now she is.
By law, you have to provide somebody with heat.
Right, and she, I don't know what else to do for her. Like, I just think if, you know, somebody can go out tomorrow, I told her.
He'll be there tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm going to give him the number and her name privately and if somebody can go out, I told her to be there around nine and check to see what's going on because I don't know what else to do for her. But she, you know, it's hard enough for her being disabled. That's one. I have another one where, I'll give you that address later too privately. The people have a yard and there's a fence on each side, but at the end of the yard, they used to have a garage. Well, they tore the garage down, so there isn't a back fence. But the owner of the house on the other side, their fence buddies up to their side fence. Well, they have some dogs that are tearing up his fence. I don't know, you know, what and how to handle that either. So, I'll give him the address before I go home.
Excuse me.
And I think the borough workers did a great job taking care of the snow issues in Bristol. I think people do have to be aware though, if there's no snow on the street, there's no reason to have all these chairs and stuff. It's hard, but it's a little out of hand. I just think it just looks terrible too. When you dig out, I understand you want to save your spot, but after that, it's just like, you have to stop somewhere. I also want to ditto what Lorraine said and I want to thank Number Three's Fire Company, President Pat Carlson, Vice President Paul Goslin, Paul Goslin Jr. and Joe Saxon for having us there. It was a very nice banquet and being part of the, represented me and Robin that night, you know, met with my constituents. Bless you. And it was very nice and thank, want to thank them also. That's it. I have nothing.
This is the sample of the light that they're pulling. No, this is. Just the other item proposed for the agenda is a motion to accept the land development time extension request for Walmart super center expansion to March 18th. Just a normal procedure. Okay. We've been meeting for the last six, there's a lot of construction and development that may happen in 2011, which we're keeping our fingers crossed. One of them is the expansion of Walmart. We've been meeting with them over the last six or seven months. They want to turn the Commerce Park Walmart into a Super Walmart, which we're happy because we don't want to lose this in Bristol. I mean, if they moved out of, out of that center, the center probably would become a, you know, a vacant eyesore forever. So, that's one major project that we're working on along with some other major developments that, and the reason we don't announce them, because they don't want them announced. But Walmart seems to, it's very close to happening and we want them to stay and sign a 20-year lease or more and be around here for a long time. So, they're asking for an extension of their application. Mr. Solon, are you?
Yeah, I mean, this is not a bad thing. They're basically, they've been trying to get everything together so that when they do come before the planning commissioning council, it could all get done at once. So, we're very close to that happening and so they're just, they need another extension. But we'll keep our fingers crossed it looks like this is going to happen. I wanted to say one more thing. When everybody's sneezing and coughing in here, I think we all should just run from this room as quickly as we can.
Yeah, right. If you have anything. Anybody in the public this time want to come up and state your name? Side of the room first.
Tony Ricky on 500 Kilometer Street. I just have a quick question. I know with the 17 inches of snow, it's a, it's a big problem, but is Mill Street still designated as a snow?
Emergency.
Emergency. And the reason why I ask is just trying to go down, a few days later, several days later, you have high piles of snow and you have people trying to, you know, go into businesses and they jet out and I almost hit somebody. So, it was just a.
All the borough workers went there and cleaned all the snow off the street. We loaded all our trucks, took, matter of fact, McGoney Jewelers sent a letter and an email to the manager thanking them, the business owners thanked us. Dr. Manarino called and thanked us for clearing all the snow off of Mill Street. As far as this snow emergency route, I think what the manager's been in touch with the Business Association. And they used to have signs posted years ago, but when the sign sits there so long, it becomes invisible, you don't pay attention to it. I think we're more successful in having the parking enforcement officer place no parking over all the meters before a storm. Now, again, this storm was unusual because they said we weren't going to get hit with the amount of snow that they predicted. So, I mean, up until this note, I don't think anybody had anything to complain about. I don't think they have anything to complain about now. It took an extra day or two to get everything done. But I think we're all in agreement and we met with Merle a few times that I think we come up with bagging the meters. We're going to try that and see how that works because it's fresh, it's in your mind, you see something and you know not to park on Mill Street.
I just want, I just had a question. For curiosity, the persons that were caught spraypanning, were they town residents or out of town residents?
Out of town.
Out of town.
I announced that last, I don't know, was it last month or a month before when they caught them, they were 18, 19, or 19 and 21-year-olds from Levittown. It was in the paper and all. I don't know if you're reading it.
No.
That was in the paper.
Okay. I was just curious. Hope you throw the book out and just coming into town and, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
Richard Toasty, I live in Grundy Towers. I just take a couple of minutes of your time. I represent the Veterans Memorial Committee and we've been coming under a little bit of fire because nothing is getting done, so what I want to do is just clear the air. When we started, we realized how much work is involved and how much trouble we were going to have with different things as far as getting permits and so forth. Our target date was 2012. We are right on schedule to do what we're going to do at that point. And at this point, we have over 2,000, this is from 1940 to the present time, we have over 2,000 names of Bristol residents that served in the military service. 81 died on active duty. There was 11 prisoner of war and 110 men were, excuse me, 111 were wounded. I think at last count, we had 27 women, which will be another separate thing. But as far as what is going on, we're running fundraisers constantly. We have a beef and beer on March 5th. It's at Levittown Number One, it's $30 a person. If anybody can give us their support, we appreciate it. And I'd like to thank you for letting me have this time.
Anytime. Anybody else on this side of the room, Merle?
What are you talking about the snow? Did you mention about the kids on Trenton Avenue?
Let me, I'm glad you brought that up. I was coming down Trenton Avenue and kids play, kids are kids. And in one of the big snow piles that was in front of their home, was a hole that was cut in and there was a kid, little kids, or two kids in and out of this hole. And when we had our meeting the day after the snow here, I said to Merle, George and Mr. Dillon, God forbid if our snowplow came down that street and didn't realize that kid was in that hole, we would have killed him. So, I advised Kevin to go collapse the hole that day so the kid couldn't play in there. Now, I understand kids have to play and I'm sure it was fun and games, but what you need to realize, when them guys are in them plow trucks and every time they pass, they want to try to keep making the street wider and wider. And God forbid that plow came down and that kid was in that tunnel at that time, we, who knows what would have happened. And it may have not been him. I mean, his parents may have stayed out there with him and made sure he was safe, but when he went in the house, who knows if another kid would have came and went into this little fort or whatever they wanted to call it. And, you know, you can't say it. So, that was a major thing that, you know, I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, I just want to, the thing with the, with the large piles of snow and kids burrowing into them, it goes beyond the plows because if they burrow into one of those piles, it has the potential to collapse on its own. And then you're going to have a kid that's trapped inside a snow pile that maybe, maybe goes for hours before somebody, so I would suggest that anybody, if you see kids burrowing into some of these piles, that they notify an adult or call the police to have that taken care of before we do have an accident.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Anybody else on this side of the room like to speak? Not on the dog again. Okay, you want to go?
I was just going to say about the tunnel, there's one on my street.
Pardon me?
The tunnels, the children burn on there. Yeah, but not the 300 block where I was, block before, I think that's the 400 block.
The street?
It's, I'm not sure where it is, it's down the street and sidewalk.
Send the inspectors by tomorrow, Jim. The 400 block on the, if you're coming down Washington, left or right?
On the left-hand side, on the opposite.
You're saying the 400 block?
Yeah, because I'm in the 300 and then the 400 is before that. When you're coming from the train station.
From the train station is the 400 block.
Yes, I read this one.
Check out tomorrow morning. Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room like to comment on anything else?
Hi, I'm Denise Smith from 562 Bass Street. And I wanted to thank the Borough Council for the Keep Off Shoulder sign, the No Turn On Red and the lines that you painted that I had complained about that corner. And I think it has made a tremendous difference. I've walked along there, it's been very, it's been great. I've driven there and everybody, you know, obeys that for the most part. And I'd also like to thank Goodwill Hose Number Three for coming out to my home Friday evening. I was babysitting my granddaughter and my washing machine kind of caught on fire and started smoking. I unplugged it, turned it off, called 911. And they came out, oh, man, so quickly. My granddaughter thought it was great, but I just want to thank them for coming in such a late hour and, and making me feel secure with my granddaughter and my family. We also have another Bristol Borough homegirl that has made very good and has been in the news and in the media lately, Teresa Moore. I don't know, what year did you graduate, Ralph? She graduated 1974?
No, I didn't. But it would have been '74.
Okay, well then, I know you know her, Teresa Moore Griffin. Well, she just published a book, Lies at Limit. She's going to be in Bristol on February 25th at Bristol High School, working with some of the students, with Mr. Gerard. And I think that's a good thing. So, if anybody's able to come out and kind of see her and give her some props, that'd be nice. And we're also having our Black History Month Talent Showcase on February 25th at Bristol High School's auditorium at 6:30 PM. This is our seventh year. Our students as a total in those seven years have contributed 124,000 community service hours. And we have great talent and it's for a worthy cause. It's, we're going to be donating all the proceeds to the Sickle Cell Disease Association. So, we hope that everybody will come out and I'm going to come to the next meeting and bring lots of flyers and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything before we adjourn? The only thing, if you can remember, if you can't make a donation to Donnie Crowe, keep him in your prayers. I'm going to have the manager make some flyers and leave them up here for the address and see what we can do to help him. Does that give a motion to adjourn?